Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone here this morning. It's time to call the City of Franklin, City Commission to order. And it'll be a regular meeting. And at this time, I will ask Commissioner Bush if he would to lead us in a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Our fathers, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. The kingdom come, that will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us for our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. We will move on. And the first thing that we're going to take care of this morning is under general government, and that will be discussion and a possible action regarding a recommendation received from the Franklin Planning and Zoning relating to data tech center and energy production facilities. And I'm going to ask Scott Crabtree if he will speak to that.
Yes, Mayor. As you all saw in the packet, we received a written recommendation signed by the Planning and Zoning chairperson, who I think happens to be here. Last Wednesday, I received it from the Planning and Zoning attorney. The recommendation was as cited in their motion, which was to deny the text amendments for the reasons stated in the letter. At this point, it's up to the commission to accept or deny their recommendation.
Mayor, I make the motion, we accept their recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. We have, you've heard the comments, we have a motion by Commissioner Powell to accept the recommendation of PNC. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Bush. Is there any further discussion to be?
Are we still planning on doing the committee that we formed last session?
That will be decided at a later date, whenever we have, whenever we have a new Industrial Board Director.
I mean, that could be months.
It could be, yeah.
Can we just rescind the motion and make a new motion that we appoint somebody else? That way we can at least get it started.
As a point of order, we're in this topic. Let's bring that, it's a regular meeting, so you can bring it up later, but if we can get this one done first.
Sure. Okay.
Any further, any further comment? If not, I'll call for a vote. And Kathy, would you do a roll call vote on that?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuarrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously?
We will move on then to hear the public.
Mayor, please, just to clarify for the public, that means that the text amendments are done. They're over. Sorry.
Thank you. We will move on to hear the public, and I don't believe we have anyone signed up to hear the public today. You know, okay, we will move on from there to approval of minutes, and that'll be approval of minutes of the November 10th, 2025, regular meeting. And I'm sure everyone's had an opportunity to look over those. Do I have a motion to accept them?
Make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner McQuarrie.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Any further discussion? All in favor of the minutes stated as they are written? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'm going to impose this time, just because I haven't had a chance to read the minutes.
Okay. We have, we have all ayes, except Commissioner Bush is a no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to recognitions, and under recognitions will be, we have, we have Johnny Skipworth here. Johnny, if you will come up, and that'll be achieving the drinking water treatment class double A certification, and we'll turn that over to Johnny.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners. I am so happy to be here today to recognize Logan. Yes, he's becoming a repeat offender. He's won his second, or has been awarded his second drinking water class two certification. So, just a certification that is required to make drinking water for the state of Kentucky. It's through the Division of Water. And he is just blazing a trail towards getting his class fours, which would make him eligible to run our drinking water plant, all by himself. No pressure at all. In his own words, he's, he's all right. He's very humble. He's more than all right. He really amazes us each and every day, and he pushes through all the difficult tasks I ask of him, even outside of just lab sampling and operating the plant, but maybe a little bit of motor work and some plumbing and hanging some signs, and just about anything I need help with, he's there. And I'm just so very proud of you, and so thank you very much for your dedication and your perseverance, and we're very happy for you. Congratulations.
And I believe there's a proposed motion to recognize Logan, so do I?
No, we don't have to have a motion.
Okay, all right. We'll move on. Okay. We have, I believe Chief Solomon here to recognize a new officer that we have.
I'll introduce our newest officer, Max Mueller. He just started today. Max comes to us from BGPD, where he spent five years. Max actually resides here. Back when he was working for BGPD, he reached out a few times and inquired when he got done with his contract to maybe come and work with us, so we're looking forward to it. I think he's going to be a great asset to our police department, and want to welcome him, and get him sworn in with Scott Crabtree.
Okay.
Well, you don't look like you've been five years anymore. All right, Max, if you would, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this country, that you will be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, that you possess the required qualifications to hold this office, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer for the City of Franklin, Kentucky, according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present constitution, you have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, nor out of it, nor have you accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? And do you finally and further solemnly swear or affirm that you will endeavor to the best of your ability to detect and prosecute all gamblers, voters, violators, and losses against the gambling, so that you may say I do or I swear?
I do.
Welcome aboard, Max, sir.
Welcome, Max. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances, and Ms. Kathy Diller will bring that to us, and that'll be page 19.
We'll have second summary reading today, ordinance number 2025-027, ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, by estimating revenues and appropriations. And today, I will just read the amended numbers. Total revenue, general fund amended to $13,898,329. No change to storm water, no change to utility fund, no change to sanitation fund, municipal aid, no changes. Cemetery fund amended to $559,000. No changes to, in total revenues for perpetual care or the debt service fund. Total appropriations, general fund amended to $12,659,945. Storm water fund, total appropriations amended to $604,919. Utility fund amended to $11,386,77. No change to the sanitation fund on total appropriations. Municipal aid fund amended to $861,000. Total appropriation amended on cemetery fund is $467,895. And no changes on total appropriations for perpetual care or the debt service fund. I will need a first and second motion for approval.
So moved. We have a motion by Commissioner Powell.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart.
Second, Mayor.
Kent, does this include this amendment, the total amount? Does it include any HR hiring or assistant city manager hiring?
No, it does not.
No, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, Kathy.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
No.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuarrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. This concludes second summary reading of this ordinance. It will become effective upon passage and publication, and will be posted on the city's website. A full copy of the ordinance is available upon request by contacting the city clerk at City Hall during normal business hours.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Okay, we'll move on to community services, and that will be discussion and a possible action regarding a proposed playground at the Franklin Police Department. And I think Chief Solomon wants to speak to that for us.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into the what, I just want to kind of go back in time a little bit and talk about the whys, all right? So if anybody's ever listened to any articles that I put out, or read any articles, or listen to me talk, you'll hear me talk about community policing. It's been a central focus of mine all the way back when I took over as chief in 2014. I had actually, excuse me, I actually found an article the other day that Brian Hancock, I don't know if y'all remember him, but he worked for the Franklin favorite back then, found an article the other day when I got introduced as chief, we were talking about my vision, the mission for the police department, how I wanted to run the police department, the direction, all that. And in that article, you know, 11 years ago going on 12, we were talking about community policing back then, and what those goals and objectives were going to be. So if you look back in 2014, it was a very pivotal time for policing. There was a lot of contentiousness going on in the nation with law enforcement, stuff like that, so it was a very pivotal time for us to foster relationships, collaborate with partnerships and stuff in the community. So we did that early on. If you remember, we were the first ones in 2015 in this region to fully implement our police department with body cams. The reason why we did that was because of transparency and letting the public know that what we say we're going to do, we're actually going to do it, and we're going to follow up with that. So everything that we've done since then, you know, we're active in our community, we hold, we host events, we've had thousands of people, you know, up here for different things that, you know, since we've moved in this police department. So in 2016, I started talking to Kenton about the need for a new police department. Obviously, we had far outgrown our police department, the size, we had, you know, double the officers that we had back then. Then in 2018, 19, we got into talking to Branstad and Carroll about, you know, the design plans and all that, because at that time, I started going around, went to 10 different police departments in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that had been built, police departments that had been built in the last five years at that time. One thing that I noticed is they were all standalone facilities. There was nothing unique about them, they were just, they were just a building, which served the purpose for the police department, but it did absolutely nothing for the community, right? So when we acquired this land up here, I think, what, Kent, is it 6.8 acres?
Yes.
We acquired this land up here, we looked at what could we do with that land? Well, that's where the vision started taking off, that's where everything started coming into play, or like, how can officers like, they're young, and they're small, how can they grow up and want to be police officers for the Franklin Police Department? Well, you do that by fostering those relationships, you do that by having them up here, getting comfortable with police officers, and becoming one with your department, right? There's been hundreds of them came in here for tours and stuff like that in the last year and a half. So we looked at that, and we said, we don't want just a standalone building up here that does nothing. So we started looking, what can we do out here that allows people to be safe and come up here, children come up here and walk with their parents on the walking trail, that's where the playground was born mentally, that's where the walking trail comes into place, that's where the pavilion comes into play, ball courts eventually, right? So what we were basically saying at that time is we're going to invest in our community. So that, that's the why. Here's the what. So back in July, Carroll, Moe, and myself met with Josh Wagner from Miracle, Kentucky and Tennessee. If you're not familiar with Josh and his company, they've done a lot of work for playgrounds at the park, at the Housing Authority, and many other places all over the Commonwealth of Kentucky. They're also a state contract vendor, which is very, very important. So we met back with Josh, he did a whole presentation up here. Obviously, you got the playground design in your packet. So we, we ended up coming up, trying to figure out exactly what we wanted, and what we also wanted is like, not just something that's built for now, but to have the foundation to be able to add on to it as time goes on. So, so we ended up, we come up with some pricing, he gave us a quote, so I'll get to the what now. So the total cost for this project is $243,941, which includes the playground, the equipment, the installation, surfacing, fencing, an entire shaded area, seating and tables, and then also, like I said, the wheeler has the fencing around the playground itself. So before I get into like, making a motion, do y'all have any questions for me?
Roger, I want to tell you something, though. In the last 10 years, it's really coming around, and more so since you've been in charge. Last two weeks, I've seen two times I've been in town where children were taking pictures with police officers. Back when I was a kid, you didn't talk to police officers because they were only there to get you.
Yeah.
But I agree with the program you're doing, and it's paying off, because I see it all the time.
Absolutely.
Kids are really approaching officers with.
I think you'll see, or as we, as we finish this out in the next several years, like, I think you'll see a lot more of that interaction, and it's, it was what I envisioned like, you know, eight, nine years ago, so it's all coming to fruition now, so, all right.
Chief, I'd just like to say, I have seen how many children, especially children and families, are really coming around, around here and using the facilities, and I, I think it's a, I think you're doing a great job, and, and I think the more, the more that we can get children here and make them feel comfortable, make them feel safe, the better our community will be. And so I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity for our community.
Thank you, sir.
There's, there's, it's hard to tell, but there's, there's one swing for a disabled child. Is there anything else for disabled children?
Yeah, the piece of equipment over, show you, I think it's on the next page. This one here is worth, yeah, as well. And then that's the whole, the surfacing will be, you know, ADA compliant, the fencing obviously is around there for that reason, and then there's room, obviously, to build as we go, so.
Cool.
We want to stay within the budget.
There you go.
Sure.
So we need to, so the urgency is, so we had like, 220 left over-ish from the building, correct? That was supposed to be.
Yeah, on the project last year.
229, I believe.
So it pretty much, it covers the majority of it.
Yeah, and then the amendment that y'all just read today uncovered the other 14,000 that was included in the amendment, so.
So the urgency is because of the, the price increase for?
Yeah, December 1st, there'll be a 5% price increase, which will bring it up another 12,200, which we do not want to do, so to keep it within the budget. So all you have to do there is we'd have to submit a purchase order and actually order.
The PO.
Yeah, yep.
Before December the 1st, that is, right?
Yeah, and then that's just, that's just scheduling, like, you know, if we wanted to actually get the equipment in and start doing install in March, you know, we're not locked in to any specific time, it's just ordering the stuff, so.
So if we're ready, I'll make the motion. I would, I would make that motion that we approve the playground quotation for $226,007 by Miracle of Kentucky and Tennessee, as well as the quote for $17,934, and to place that order or to send a PO prior to December 1st to the playground equipment manufacturer, and then allow the mayor to sign any and all documents related to the project.
I'll second it, Mayor. We have a motion by Commissioner Bush, and a second by Commissioners Powell. Is there any further discussion? If not, Kathy, would you mind doing a roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuarrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Good to go, Ron.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we will move on to general government, and that'll be discussion and a possible action regarding a letter of support for Project Gong. And I believe we have our Industrial Authority Executive Director here today, Jim DeSesry. Thank you, Jim, for coming and discussing that for us.
So Mayor and members of the commission, Project Gong is a new project that is looking to take over the existing Toyo building that has been empty at least for a year and a half, maybe around two years. This company is in the construction materials business, they actually make the metal support system for prefabricated concrete structures, like precast walls, the boxes they use for storm sewers and things like that. And so they will be making the metal reinforcements that go into those products at this facility. It's a $31.5 million investment. There's two phases to this project. Holding company is going to buy the building, that is the parent company of the company that'll be operating, and then the operating company will lease the building from the holding company. They'll have 55 new jobs, $24 an hour average hourly wage before benefits, and we have a letter, but they're going for KBI incentives on December 11th, which will be the last KEDFA meeting, the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority meeting for the year, and asking for their incentive package. And this letter of support is asking that the City of Franklin give up that 0.25% occupational tax for a 10-year period as part of the incentive package with the state. For those that have questions about why we have code names for different projects, that is required by the state. They prefer that no, no company name be released until their incentives are approved by KEDFA. That's why we use the code names. Once the KEDFA board approves the preliminary incentives, that's what, what happens first, they do not get their incentives until they actually create the jobs and do all the things that they say they're going to do, and then they come back and ask for final approval on their incentive package through the KEDFA board. But until, when, when, on December 11th, when they approve the incentive package, the company name becomes public. So that's why we do it that way. It's not something we do arbitrarily, it's because it's required by the state. And so, Mayor, I would ask the commission to approve the letter of support for Project Gong and their incentive package.
And this is not anything new that we have done for former companies. I mean, most, most, I mean, what Jim's presenting is what we have done over the years for all, most all companies coming in. We seldom ever have one that doesn't want any incentives, but most of them do, and this is just a process that we do for.
Mayor, if I may, not only do you need to approve the letter, but the commission needs to authorize you to sign it.
Yeah, okay. So you've heard the, you've heard the presentation, do I have a motion that I think?
Yeah.
I have a question first. Scott, does, when they apply?
We need to do a, we need to do a motion, Adams. Have a motion.
I'm, I'm, we go through this letter and.
We have a motion, okay. Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a second by Commissioner Powell, now.
KBI, when they apply for the state, we automatically have to follow, is that correct?
We have to have a local match of 1%. Now, through an existing inter-local agreement, because the City of Franklin paid the total of 1% for so many years without county participation, when Jim Henderson was still county judge, we did an inter-local agreement to split it three quarters and one quarter, so we could equalize the total dollar contribution over time between the city and county. That's why we are only required to pay a quarter percent. The county will pay three quarters of the percent.
Any idea what that would cost over 10 years, not receiving that?
Have no idea until we know the total number of jobs and total payroll. You can do quick math based on what he said, but there's no way for me to know until I know those numbers.
I didn't hear a question.
He asked what the total investment, or the total of what we would be paying would cost over 10 years, and.
Yeah, don't have those, I can, once they submit their KBI application, we could get that information, but I should note that the fiscal court approved the incentive letter last Tuesday for this project for their 0.75% that Mr. Crabtree just mentioned. And then it is 55 new jobs at 24 an hour average, so you can kind of figure that out, you know, 40-plus hours a week times 52, and you get, you can come up with sort of a roundabout number on that. And that's before incentives is, or before, you know, benefits.
Right. And like I said, we're required, if the state kicks in, we're required to get a local match of 1% total from either or both bodies.
Thank you.
That answer for you?
And we're filling an empty building.
Right.
Yes, that desperately needs to be filled, so.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Kathy, we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuarrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Thank you, Mayor.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we will have discussion and a possible action regarding proposal for AED in police cruisers, and I think Commissioner McQuarrie wanted to speak to that.
Yes, sir. So we already have some AEDs on the police cars now? How many do we have total?
Four.
Four? And I went across the article last week, where a lot of bigger cities already, they're funding all the police cars, and we didn't do that to begin, and but I talked to Tom Scott, our EMS director, this last week, their run, their run volume has increased dramatically over the last two years. They had over 4,000 runs a year, so I spoke to Kenton about it earlier. It just makes sense that I think the commission should look into putting AEDs in all the police cars, because EMS is getting busier, and Roger will tell you, they're, they're at and about, they can run upon it quicker, not that our EMS don't do a good job or anything, they do, but the people that know about CPR, early defibrillation CPR is what saves lives. For every minute that passes without defibrillation, you, you'd lose 10% chance of recovering from that event. So four minutes could make, well, I like 40, I don't want 40% coming off of people's chances, but I take Roger would be good with this. So I'm asking the commission to let Roger look into getting, whatever, what that amount is, and maybe we can look at it next commission meeting if we will approve that.
Yes, I would like to ask a question. We do have four cruisers with them, correct?
No, sir.
How, how often are they used?
Just one. We, we have one at City Hall, one in PD that passes around, so, yeah, so.
How, how often, and is that?
I have some information if you want anyone to pause it. Question you want to talk about on a separate occasion?
Unless the mayor, mayor has more questions, I'd just say wait till then, but it's, it's become pretty standard everywhere that all cruisers have these, and you can't predict when, and I can kind of answer that question, but.
I think his question was, have we used it yet?
Yeah, that's, that was my question. I mean, how often have we had to use the one that we have?
We're, we're using them like, a couple times, at least every now and then, so.
There is one left, though it's worth it.
Use that they're not, they're not 100%, like, we're not having to use them as much, but it's one of those things, like, if you need them, you need them.
Yeah.
You don't want to not have them available, but right now, we do have them for all the, what we do is sign them out to the ship officers, the cruisers that they have on ship. I'm not sure exactly if we're talking about active outfitting the area police doors, the patrol cars, or just keeping them up for the on-ship.
How much are they? Yeah, that's good.
They're about $1,100 a unit.
How many cars do we have?
We would need one for the patrol. We would need one for patrol, because I would think that would.
We're not, we're not budgeted for that, are we, Carol? There's not. I mean, it's something I think we can look into.
What's the life of these equipment?
Oh, years.
Years.
I mean, we have.
Depending on how often you use them.
Really, it's battery life, so we're under fifty percent battery life. We've had these for a year and a half now. You're looking at about three years, every day. So, you're looking at about seven thousand dollars for batteries if we're outfitting entire, when I say forty, for patrol officers. Be about seven thousand every three years, and about twelve hundred every three years passed. You have to manage that and all that.
Okay. I was curious to know the life of them, because we did, if we, you know, in my, my vote, if we talked about voting, it would, it wouldn't be one for every cruiser, but it'd be one for every officer on each ship. What's the maximum number of officers that's on a ship at a time?
We do overlap, so I would say seven or eight probably max. You need your time from your overlapping ships to work.
So, then we really only need about five more?
Well, you're good. You gotta look at the potential of replacing these batteries on the ones we have now. As you said, they're under fifty percent shelf life, so we're, we're going to have to, we're, I don't know, the timeframe is. You're going to be on the south end of those batteries, so you might as well replace the AEDs. We don't recommend these patented batteries, because almost a thousand dollars is an AED, so.
Yeah.
If we're going to do that, I would recommend being about eight.
So, you'd recommend eight, and they're eleven hundred apiece-ish? Okay.
Let, let me, if I, if I can jump in for one second. When you start buying something like this, it, it's kind of like the liability of somebody during a snowstorm. If you start scraping off the snow on your sidewalk, and you do a half job or don't finish it, and somebody falls, you're liable. If you let it alone, you're not. If you get three or four of these, and you don't have it at the right time on a shift, then somebody could potentially sue us and say, well, you had them available, why didn't you have them available then? So, my recommendation, if you're going to buy them, is buy more than you think you need to make sure everybody that could potentially need one has one.
So, what would you recommend?
Plus, why would you not spend the money? If you save one life, it's worth it.
So, what would you recommend, twelve?
I, I think, I think you need to have, I mean.
I just, I think the recommendations come back with December eighth and give a recommendation, cost and how many to the police department.
That's a good idea, because I don't, I mean, I think you need to have more than what you think you might need, just so we're a hundred percent covered.
So, is that, are, are you responsible for that?
Yeah, I can come back with all the, I can figure it out.
Okay.
But I, save one life, it's worth it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, can we, so if we're not budgeting for it from the PD budget, can we move the money from the general fund to pay for it?
Well, we'll do a budget amendment before we get them in, yeah. Wouldn't you think? Yeah. It's what she generally does.
We're good with that? Okay. Moving on, under general government will be discussion and a possible action regarding proposed ordinance resoning property located on Thirty-One W. South owned by Suri, Suri Invest, Safari, Safari Investments LLC. And Scott, you will speak to.
Yes, this was, this, this came up, this is property owned by, you know him as Raj, out near I sixty-five. He has asked for this property to be annexed if you find it so appropriate. We need two sponsors for the ordinance. Commissioner Powell is one.
Okay, we have, we have Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Stewart.
So, we'll have first reading during the.
We got it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, will be discussion and a possible action regarding the release of a maintenance bond for the Franklin Forty-Nine LLC, and Carol will speak to that. I think that pertains to Grace Road.
It does, it does, Mayor. So, back in November of twenty-four, the city required Franklin Forty-Nine LLC to give us a maintenance bond for one year for just over twenty-one thousand dollars, just to ensure that they completed their work out on Grace Road at Arrington Downs subdivision. There was a final inspection done on November seventh of twenty-twenty-five, and the work has been satisfactory completed. And so I am requesting that the Commission approve that we release the maintenance bond, and the last, the attached release form in your packet would need to be signed by the Mayor.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. Okay, and moving on, we'll have discussion and a possible action regarding renewal of an e-Fax service contract, and Carol will speak to us on that also, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We are required to keep a fax line for open records requests, and we have two of those fax lines, one at the PD and one at City Hall. So, three years ago, we, we had a fax line through Windstream, and they really didn't want to continue it, so they jacked the price up astronomically. And so at that point, we found this Nuso for an e-fax line. It's essentially like a, getting just a, an email, but it, it counts as secure as a fax. So, we, our first contract was three years. It just ended. We need to do a renewal on that. Right now, we're on a month-to-month contract at the same price. The new three-year contract, the quoted price is eighteen ninety-five per line per month, which is the same as what the last one was, and the total contract price is one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents. So, I'm asking that the Commission approve to accept the quote from Nuso for the e-fax service and authorize the Mayor to sign any and all documents related to the service.
So, it's be three years?
Yes, exactly, three years.
A thousand three hundred, yeah, for three years.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stewart.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner McCrery. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. Thank you, Carol, and, let's see. I believe you have the next one, too. That's discussion and a possible action regarding amendment to the Walmart credit card account, and if you'll speak to that one also.
Adam, fill it in.
Oh, Adam, sorry, Adam. I had Carol down, I'm sorry.
It's all good. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So, we had a Walmart community card program that we've been using for a long time for, you know, emergency purchases and stuff like that. That program actually just ended without any kind of notice, so we are needing to apply for new cards. So, if the department heads will have a card if they need to go to Walmart to get anything. It's called Trevi Pay, so we would just go online, apply for it, and that way we can get the cards to the department heads, so we can get that for them. And so if the Commission agrees, allow us to apply for the new pay-by invoice with Trevi Pay with a credit limit of five thousand and authorize the Mayor to sign any and all documentation related to this program.
And all we're doing here is just applying for a new card?
Yes, the other program just ended, so that, that line's gone.
Right.
So, we need five thousand access to that.
Do I have a motion?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner Powell.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner McCrery.
Question, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm just curious, and I think it'd be just good to, you know, for it to be known, spending money like that. You know, it's a community card. What, what, what do, what do we use it for?
Uniforms. I know Johnny likes to use it a lot for, you know, stuff at the plant.
Okay.
Same with all of them.
Okay.
You know, just quick needs, basically. We don't use it a whole lot. It's just, it's there in case we need to run out there and get something really fast.
I didn't see anything about how exactly that was used. I just, I can know, I think it's good to know that. Okay, thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Stewart, it's just really replacing the, a lot of credit that was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's all ended.
I'm aware of that. I was just curious to know what it was spent for, period. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Okay, moving on, we'll have discussion and a possible action regarding a resolution authorizing amendments to the historic preservation guidelines, and Lee Ross is here to bring that to us. He's the chairman of our Historic Preservation Committee, so, Lee Ross, take off.
Yes, sir. We formed the Historic Preservation Committee years ago to obviously save our historic buildings. Our first focus was the downtown core of the Central Business District. We've expanded since then to historic neighborhoods in the adjacent, like West Cedar, South College. And we've realized we have a really secondary goal there that's become a primary goal, to preserve our historic homes for people who invest in those neighborhoods. And then what we've sort of set to expand on with this motion is to tackle our accessory structures. So, to protect accessory structures in the, especially in the neighborhoods, and to limit or at least require a review of new accessory structures. So, if you live in a historic home on South College Street, you can have faith that your neighbor doesn't come in and build a warehouse in their backyard. Right? There, there's some ways to navigate the zoning ordinances that may be acceptable, but may not be aesthetically pleasing. And so all we want to do is slow down the destruction of the accessory structures, you know, require a review first. And then, as you can see in your memo, accessory structures are complement the main, the main structure. So, if you have a Victorian home, ideally your accessory structure is something that would have been built back then, in a Victorian style. And then also, as a, as a major note, that accessory structures should be secondary in size and scale, so in height and, and footprint. So, ideally, don't have a fifteen-hundred square foot house with a fifteen-thousand square foot shed in the backyard in the historic district. Those, those things happen in the county, no problem, but ideally not in the historic district.
So, what's it, so is this, is this whole thing new, or is it changing something?
Just the accessory structure. I'm not, we have a, I think you have a two-page document that says accessory structure guidelines.
So, this is adding to our current historic?
Yes, sir.
So, what does it do to, so, so what are we talking about? Accessory structures that are already there that are not historic, though?
So, if, if you already have one, you're, you're fine, it's grandfathered in essentially. If you have a, let's say you live in a, a house from the eighteen eighties, and you have an accessory structure from the nineteen nineties, that's fine. If you go to remodel it, we would, we would try to, you know, move in the direction of being a little more historic looking. But, there aren't, there aren't many instances of, of overly sized accessory structures in the downtown area. We're just trying to get ahead of it a bit. And then with, where we work in Nashville, Franklin, Tennessee, and in Bowling Green a lot, the big thing is to build a second house in the backyard, and you can actually have a second family living on the same, same parcel. Again, fine in parts of town, but ideally not in the historic district.
Does P and Z have current regulations preventing that large of a structure?
There are height and building area limitations, but they are not related to the main building, that I know of.
This is more from an aesthetic standpoint. Yes, there are accessory structure regulations in the planning and zoning regulation book, but he's talking about keeping the historical significance consistency in the area.
And it's mostly to protect the investments of people who have already bought or invested significantly in a, in a historic home, that their investment's protected.
So, if they want to demolish and outbuilding, and they're in the zone, they're going to have to go through like a plan?
So, if, if you want to demolish, with, with these, with these guidelines aside, currently you would have to provide a demolition permit to Carter, and that would come to the Historic District Committee who would review its appropriateness. So, if, if the building is, I think it says in there, half, over half decayed, or if you have an engineer saying this building is going to fall, you can get your permit from the Historic Committee and then get your demo permit from Carter. In this case, we're just saying that you should take all effort to preserve historic buildings. And that's, that's in the accessory structure before nineteen hundred.
So, what happens if you don't?
What happens if you don't what?
What happens if you don't do this? If we put these in, and you don't do it?
Arguably, you know, they could, they could try to get the Commission to enforce it, and, and they very well may. My inclination is, though, if somebody's just trying to raise the structure, probably they're not going to give you much fit on that. In all honesty, I doubt, with the exception of where my office is, I had an old historic accessory structure that I tore down years ago because of the lamination, but I can't imagine there are that many accessory structures even out there that are historic, so this probably won't be applicable hardly at all. That's why when I reviewed it, I thought, well, this is kind of a no harm, no foul. It's more if they want to build one, to make sure it looks consistent with the neighborhood. Because as you all know, particularly on West Cedar Street, the people up there have spent a lot of money to try to, you know, keep the integrity of that area and make it look historical and nice as an entryway into our town. And they don't generally want, you know, somebody to put up a metal building in the back that has sliding doors, which maybe you got from those. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with those, but you know what I'm saying? It may not look like the rest of the neighborhood. So, I don't think that's going to be a big issue, Commissioner Bush, but again, I, I don't know.
And, and to that point, for the most part, in most of the parcels downtown, the base zoning won't allow an extravagantly sized building because you simply don't have the green space.
Yeah, and the lot sizes aren't there.
Right. We're, we're just saying it should be shorter than the house, and it should be complimentary of the house. Just, just so that we can keep our historic homes attracting, you know, people who take care of the homes.
Trying to be clear on this. So, let's say, now, let's take Scott's, for example. Could you build with this proposal, could you build just a standard double car garage?
Absolutely.
As long as, is there going to be strict guidelines? Like, metal, it's got to be this, got to be that. I mean, I don't want to restrict somebody from building a nice-looking garage that.
Right. Same, and we went, we went round and round for a couple of hours about materials. And so we, we, we ask that it's a guideline, first of all. So, the material should be complimentary, which gives you a broad range of options. And again, it's a guideline, so if you can prove that your metal building is complimentary of the house, and it, and it looks great, and you can't really see it from the street, we're probably behind you.
But they don't have big tons of money spent on action of Victorian-style building?
Sure, of course. Right.
Right, okay.
And, and we argued the same thing where the designer on it, accessory structures then were secondary in nature. They lacked the detail of the house. So, as long as you're complimentary, you know, we're not, we're not asking you to replicate any kind of custom gingerbread work or, or something like that, right? We also wouldn't want that garage to be two stories with your house being one story, and suddenly your neighbor doesn't have any sunlight in their backyard.
Well, and, and keep in mind that, you know, going to enforcement, Commissioner Bush's question, that if somebody went to the Historic Preservation Committee and didn't like the answer the Historic Preservation Committee gave, they're going to come to you guys anyway. You guys would ultimately get to find a decision about whether they have overstepped their authority or not, and whether to enforce it. So, as, as Lee Ross pointed out adequately, these are just guidelines. That's it.
We're, we're seeing a lot of, especially out-of-town buyers, pay, you know, big, big money for South College, West Cedar Street. We want to, we want to keep it going that way. We want to keep those houses up. And we wouldn't want to open the door for those houses to be on the decline, because it stopped feeling like a historic neighborhood.
So, if you all find it appropriate, we would need a motion to approve Resolution K twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Powell, second.
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I mean, I just, can you come back at the first of the year and maybe like have a talk about the whole Historic Preservation Committee itself?
Sure.
Because like, not, not for any other, I'm going to vote no, not for any other reason, but I just don't understand enough about the Historic Preservation Society.
Yeah. We, we were, like I said, formed to slow down the demolition of historic buildings. There wasn't any kind of check. You could, you could put in a demo permit to tear down City Hall, and no one could stop you before. And so now we just say, wait a minute, that building's in the historic district. Let's analyze. And, and then, you know, as, as we've expanded a bit, we're taking care of boarded-up windows and non-accessible entrances and things like that. So, we'd be happy to talk about everything we do.
So, this, I mean, so it's not really an emergent issue?
Uh, this, today, this, this item?
I mean, I know we've got a motion and a second to vote on it, but I mean, I would just like to wait until after we have heard more to, to better understand it. But, that's just me.
I'd be happy to talk about what we do and, and, and our concerns. Our concerns are based on proposals we get and what we see in other cities. And it's extremely popular in Nashville to buy a beautiful home and build a second house in the backyard and have an accessory structure that then houses another family.
Yeah, like Green Hills.
Yeah, and, and the, and the neighbors don't like that.
Yeah.
And so then we get, we get, we have an. And so then we get, we get, we have an exodus of people living in historic homes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Kathy, please.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Bush?
No.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrary?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And that motion passes?
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Lee Ross.
Mayor, I do think it's probably a good idea to have them come and re-explain in January or February.
Oh, yeah, he said he would be willing to come back.
And the ones of you who are on here then realized that when we formed this committee, everybody kinda went round and round about it then, about how far, how much power we wanted to give them, and all that, because it is a sore subject to tell people how to use their property. So I think Lee Ross, you'd be a great candidate to come back, I'm gonna draft you, to come back and explain all that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee Ross. Okay, moving on, we'll have discussion or possible action regarding Kentucky League of Cities safety audit. And Chief Solomon, you gonna, you wanna speak to that?
Mayor, Mayor, as he walks up there, we had, from the KLC, we had an audit back last summer, and we got a before and after. And, and I just thought it would be good, because of the PD, the policies, the procedures that you can have, and what they're constantly updating. So I'd asked Chief Solomon to kinda come back and say, "What can you do to help us?" Because they have a lot of these things that are implied with the PD. So I kinda drafted him in to, to improve our scores. So Chief, you wanna go ahead and go forward?
Okay.
Thank you.
So including your packet are the four different audits, from the initial one, and then the two updated audits. So we did our initial audit September 3rd of this year. Our Ben Cook from the Kentucky League of Cities came in and met with myself, Kenton, Jeremy Perrin, Trent, Darrell, and Johnny. And then after we met in person for, I think it was about an hour, hour and a half, I took Ben around, and we went around to each Public Works, Water Department, and Wastewater. And we did onsite inspections and assessments there as well. And what they do is they come back with the information from there to make changes, whether it be OSHA changes, or safety changes, or, you know, recommended things that would improve your audit. So took some notes, compiled some information, went back, made some initial changes, sent some policies over to Scott, some loss of continuous service thing, went to Utility Department to utilize for new service, things like that. So coming November 14th, we did a new and improved audit. So you can kinda see where, just initially from the business auto, we went from a 20% up to 87.5%. And then general liability, that one went from 53% up to, I believe, 81%. Our public official audit, that one actually, it says 80% here, but I was talking to Scott on the phone this morning. There was actually a couple policies that we did have that are not reflected here. So we actually would be at a 95%, not 80%. And then, and the, the last one was the sewer. And we passed everything in the sewer except for the documented inspections part, which basically, I talked to Trent about that. So every five years, you have to go through a full inspection of the sewer system. It would be over $100,000 to do that. So 70% outside of doing that is exceptionally well. Most cities are not gonna go to that extreme, or that money to spend to do, you know, to try to get above an 80% in that category. So as long as we stay above 80% in all these categories, our insurance premiums are exponentially low, lower, but not to the point to try to offset that with $100,000 worth of service to do inspections on sewer lines. So Trent, do you have anything to add on that? I know he said he would like to do it, but at that, that money is, is, you know, so you have to contract that out, so, but yeah. So do y'all have any questions on this audit?
And this is something we constantly have to, you know, and I've asked Roger to kinda keep watching and making sure we're doing policies and procedures, and keeping this in check, because it asks for kind of a safety committee, and we gotta meet, we gotta do amendments, and we gotta report. So, and obviously, it's a good, like an audit from KLC, it's a free audit. I think it's a good snapshot for us. And so we're getting ready for the next fiscal year, and we'll have these good numbers to show.
Yeah, so a lot of the things we have to implement, I mean, you see a lot of it on here, where we went from zero points to, you know, whatever the maximum points were. One of those things, like Trent's talking about, is a safety committee. That's myself, Trent, Darrell, Dan, and John, and Johnny. So we're all on that safety committee. So we'll meet every quarter. And then there needs to be onsite inspections twice a year, which I've already conducted one with all the departments. And I'll go back here in about six months and do another one. But as long as these things, then we're going to a conference in March, which will increase our score a little bit more in one category. So most of these things will be up in the 90, 95 percentile by the time we get around to the insurance premium portion of it in March, so. But been a lot of diligence, a lot of work put into this, but I think, like, we should be proud of the scores that we're at right now, so. And there's no motion today. I just wanted to bring this to y'all's attention, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we will move on to public safety, and I don't think we have anything under public...
I don't know if you're American.
From there, we'll move on to utilities. And under utilities, we'll be discussing a possible action regarding award a bid for the hydrant replacement. And Trent's gonna speak to us on that.
Thank you, Mayor. The city published an invitation to bid 2026-06 Hydrant Replacement Bid. The bid opening was Wednesday, November 4th, at 10:00 a.m. There were two sealed bids submitted as follows. Progressive Escavating LLC put in a bid for $29,080. And Slager Escavating was $44,377. I don't know if y'all have the bid packets, but this is kinda just for labor. The city will be providing the hydrants for the excavator and the labor. And based on our bid evaluation, we recommend the city award the bid to, of the hydrant replacement to Progressive Escavating. We have used Progressive Escavating in the past for, for other jobs, and they, they do good work. I don't know if y'all know Mark Roberts or not. Mark does good work. So proposed action, commission agrees with the recommendation, award bid 2026-06 in the amount of $29,080 to Progressive Escavating, and authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents related to this project.
Okay. You've heard the proposed motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. Is there any further discussion or comments or questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. Thank you, Trent. And next will be discussion and a possible action regarding the award a bid for the backwash pump. And Johnny Skipworth is gonna bring that to us. Thank you, Johnny.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So the city published an invitation to bid number 2026-05 New Backwash Pump. The bid opening was Wednesday, November 5th, and at 10:00 a.m. There were five sealed bids submitted, and I can read through those as follows. There's American Pump Repair and Service Incorporated, $194,000. Brooks Motor and Electric, $134,071.91. Industrial Power Solutions, $265,850. John Bouchard and Sons Company, $256,443.80. Wascon Incorporated is $161,663. Based on our bid evaluation, we recommend the city award the bid to the, for the new backwash pump, to Brooks Motor and Electric. They have done work at the water treatment plant before with small pumps, and I think they do a great job, and I enjoy working with them. So our proposed action would be, if the commission agrees with the recommendation to award the bid number 2026-05 New Backwash Pump in the amount of $134,071.91 to Brooks Motor and Electric, and authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents related to the project.
And that was our best bid out of five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've heard the proposed motion. Do I have a motion to that?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
I think...
It sounds like some...
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bush, and a second by Commissioner Stewart. I believe I heard that correctly.
One question, Mayor.
Sure.
Johnny, when are they planned on installing?
So the lead time is about 16 weeks.
16 weeks?
What's the, what's the expected life?
Expectancy. Our original, the one that we have now is original. It's 40 years old. And with the use, I believe that we'll get another 40 years with our new one. Yeah.
We'll be good if we do.
Yes, I think we'll...
We're doing good if we do.
We'll be okay with that, yes.
Long past me.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. And thank you very much, Johnny.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will move on to ordinance, and we have Kathy, you will...
We've got one more ordinance today. We'll have first summary reading ordinance number 2025-028. An ordinance rezoning approximately 20 acres located on Nashville Road from V5 Interstate Interchange Business to V4 Highway Business District, as requested by Zouari Investments LLC. This includes first summary reading of this ordinance. It will become effective upon passage and publication. A full copy is available at the office of City Hall, or in the office of the City Clerk at City Hall during normal business hours.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay. From here, we will move on to executive session. And under executive session will be personnel, and that's discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee or member. And that's under KRS 618101F. And I will need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrary. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And we now move into executive session. And anyone's welcome to stay outside if they'd like. It's gonna be probably a lengthy session. So it's up to you as to whether you would like to stay or not stay.
Mayor, you wanna take a quick break before we...
I will need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush, the second.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner McQuarrie, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we now move back into regular session, and I believe we do have a motion to come before the floor.
We do, Mayor, we have one motion. The motion is to hire Austin Bishop for the position of collection service slash maintenance worker effective December 29th.
You've heard the proposed motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush. Second by Commissioner Powell. Any further comment, question? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. And from there, we will move on to city attorney report.
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, how about city mayor?
No, sir.
City Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner McQuarrie?
No, sir.
I have no report. Commissioner Bush?
So do we need to rescind the motion that we made in the last meeting for the committee to study the data center and then make a new motion since Jim has stepped down?
Well, the motion that was made was for the industrial authority to form this committee, and he has resigned, and until we get a new, until we get a new industrial board member.
I'm not sure if that's the exact motion, but I would, I would recommend.
Wanted to put him on it, make sure he gets on.
Commissioner Bush, that, and I do recall the motion, that it wasn't conditioned upon the industrial board doing it, but here's, I would recommend, though, that the industrial board director be on this board for obvious reasons, because that industrial board director is going to have the inside track and the knowledge to be able to help with this process, plus knows all of what's going on. I mean, that's, that's the only thing I would wait for, and I don't think it's going to be months and months, but that's my recommendation, y'all can do what you want to as far as reformation of the con, of the committee or whatever, so.
Can I ask a question?
You'll have to direct it to the chair.
I am not going to recognize any motions at this point.
Oh, I'm just asking a question.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
Oh.
My question is if whether or not Jim Disasry could get the committee started and then pan it over to whoever is in.
He, I, I've already inquired about that, he did not want to do that.
He's declined.
Because he wasn't sure how long he would actually be.
Ms. Wilson, I think it needs to come through the industrial authority, because that, it's an industry, it's an industry-related situation, and that's the only reason for it. I just think it needs to, it needs to be.
And if y'all, if you have somebody better, or you got some other idea, I don't care, but I just, I think that's an integral piece of this committee is to have the industrial board involved, and to do that, I think you'd want the director who's dated that.
Can I ask two more questions?
You have to go through the mayor, sorry.
Jim said that his last day, I think, was February 4th. Are they planning to hire earlier than that, because there's overlap, like what's the?
There.
It just depends.
There's already, they're already in the, the industrial authority is already in the process of trying to hire a director. They're in that process as we speak.
My understanding is, from talking to him and from you guys, is that's the end date, is February the whatever. If they get somebody before, then he's ready to go.
Yes.
I mean, I think it'll be great to have a committee, but I think it'll be, I think it needs to be through the industrial.
And I do, I'm not trying to put it off, I just think this, I think that's a piece you want in there, is to, for the guy who knows what's coming to be on this committee, so, but I'll turn it back over to you, Commissioner Bush, since you opened the discussion, if you want to reform the motion, you're certainly, you certainly can.
I'll give it two more weeks.
And I, I suspect they'll probably be hiring sooner rather than later. I'm not on the industrial, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I was just asking the mayor for something, for a commissioner's report.
Would you like?
No, no, nothing about this, no.
Anything further?
No, I think this is.
Commissioner Powell?
I'd just like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jay.
Eat a lot of turkey, that I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor about Commissioner Powell to adjourn. All in favor, aye. And we, Commissioner Bush? We now stand adjourned.